Okay, good evening. We'd like to call, um, I'd like to call the, uh, school board study session to order Monday, September 12th, 2022 at 5:33 PM. Can we have a roll call, Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Berry is absent.
She's at all.
Mr. Baydun?
Here.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Fawaz?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Saba?
Here.
Okay. Uh, topic of discussion, facilities update. Dr. Mousalem?
Ma- Madam Chair, um, I request we go into a short closed session just to update the board on, uh, personnel matter, please.
Sure, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Mr. Saba, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that we go into closed session regarding a personnel matter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're gonna go into closed session. Okay, we are back in open session, uh, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Saba? Mr. Baydun supports. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Opposed? Nope, motion carries, we are back in open session at 5:50.
So, Madam President, I wanted to take a few minutes of the board and the community's time, uh, Penny Morgan is going to present to the board where we're at in our construction process, um, and we're making some good strides, some good movement. Uh, I know many of you have probably driven by our schools and you see the work in progress, um, so it's looking good, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, so, as you all know, we have three of our elementaries that are all getting fabulous additions that are moving along. Probably not.
Think Gash is good with the finances.
Okay, got it. There we go, we're gonna start at Highview Elementary. So the architects did a rendering of what the building will look like on the outside. This comes out the back, um, just right, if you've been behind Highview, it's right where the basketball hoops are, so it comes out right there, um, and that is adding four rooms, classrooms to Highview Elementary. If we go to the next page, when you drive by, you'll see that the trees have been removed. The kindergarten window that is going to now be in the hallway, um, used to have a big window to see the playground, it now has a brick wall, and if you walk inside the classroom though, and you look at the brick wall, you can't tell where the actual wall was and the window was, so that's kind of a very nice transition for them. They've been laying the foundations and building the inner walls for the classrooms and for the, the walls, um, they're starting on the exterior walls this, today, and yes, tomorrow will be the last underground piping to be done, um, the HVAC system is doing, their pipes came in a little bit later, so that piping is happening today and tomorrow, and then once that happens, then the flooring will be poured, so the cement floor will be poured. Um, also, you'll see out there that a lot of the roof, excuse me, the roof materials have been delivered, so once we get the steel beams and things and ready for the roof, we've already got the materials ready. What they've, Axiom has decided to do is order things, and when they get here to get them delivered, even if they're not using them right away, just because of the supply chain issues that are happening still throughout because of COVID and all of those things.
Good idea.
Oh, you took it. No, I was going through it, but I just didn't. So as you can see, there's the brick wall, and the wall's going up, um, right before, after the first little brick wall right there, that's where the piping's gonna come up, and it's actually, a lot of it's already there, but my picture was before the piping was in there, so, and if you go by now, the middle wall that's over, that's about waist high, you would think, it's actually above your head now, so, these pictures are about a week old, but, um, works.
Penny, is that fenced in?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, it all is fenced in. And the fire marshal did come out, um, before we started school, and there were a couple things that they had to change, a couple exit signs, and, uh, make sure the egress or the fire route was posted, so we did that, and then they moved a fence, because the two classrooms, they were actually, that, we had blocked off those doors and said they couldn't use them because they were going out into the construction, um, but the fire marshal wanted them used, so then they put gravel right on, outside the door and moved the fence out, so there is a egress and a safe way for the kids to exit those classroom doors. Yes, sir.
Are they used just for an emergency exit?
Just for emergency exit, 'cause there's nowhere for them to go.
And then you mentioned HVAC, obviously, I forget, forgive me, I'm getting old, but...
That's okay.
There's gonna be air conditioning in these additions?
No, there is not. It wouldn't be fair to add air conditioning into these three classrooms when the rest of the entire building does not have air conditioning, because everyone would argue and fight over which classrooms there were, so, if we can't do it for everyone, then we aren't, weren't going to do it for this one.
Sorry, I touched the sun.
Can we just, go ahead, Mr. Baydun?
Regarding HVAC?
Yes.
The, the new system that was put in place for the library and a couple other areas, we're gonna be updated and complete during this transition, is that also being done?
That was with Train with being upgraded in that aspect, that has nothing to do with the addition.
No, la- last year, during the updates, when we did the, um, when the children were all doing the, um, uh, when they, when they dressed up in the library and they were all supposed to be like, uh, a biography?
Mm-hmm.
The HVAC system wasn't working in the library because it wasn't connected yet, because they're waiting on these changes to be played.
That, I will have to check on that with Train, that was not my understanding, because they were over there this week, Train was.
Maybe it's already done, I don't know, my, my information is from the summertime when I was there.
I, I will double check, because I'm not aware, for sure.
Okay.
My understanding was Train was working on it independently of these additions.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'm just gonna stop you here for one second.
Of course.
I find that most questions will be answered by the end of a presentation, so let's, um, have Penny give the presentation, and then if we have questions, uh, we'll wait till the end and ask her all our questions at one time.
Can we do it based on school?
Yes.
Okay.
You tell us when you're...
'Cause I, I'm broken it up, my three schools. So, because of the Highview, we have had several change orders, and I've, in my updates, I've been sharing with the board, but I wanted to summarize it here for you, um, the major change orders, well, all of the change orders that we have at Highview right now, two of them are on foundation, so our foundation, um, standard foundation and grade foundation is 42 inches, our foundation was actually 80 inches, which couldn't be determined until we go dig towards the foundation, so because of that, there needed to be more cement and things added to get us up to the foundation and match the current existing foundation. Um, the technology wiring, we had not included that in the original cost, because we were unclear or unsure at the time of what technology we would be adding into each of the classrooms, so I worked with Mr. Green to get the wiring that we would need, and they're going to do it, install it during the build, instead of having the wires on the outside of the wall, so we are putting it on the inside of the walls, instead of having it added after the walls have already been built, and that's what this change order for $4,000 is. The final change order in Highview at the moment is for plumbing, what happened was, is right over by the classrooms that we're adding, there is a, a custodial closet which has water and plumbing and everything in it, in the drawings, it was unclear, when you went down into the tunnels underneath, that that tunnel wasn't connected to that, um, closet, utility closet, so instead of pulling the water directly from that utility closet, because they can't go through the cement walls in the way it is, they had to bring it from the boiler room, so that's why there's extra there, um, and then the tunnel work that they were going to do was credited to us and, and revised, but the ultimate change was $9,000, and that was to create the piping from the boiler room over to the new, okay? And they couldn't do it above the, the closets or above the classrooms, 'cause the steel beams, they couldn't go through the steel beams in the roof, and there was not enough distance between the steel beams and the ceiling to get the piping that they needed into the additions. Okay? So the original project for Highview was $2,550,000, so far, the cost of the change orders is $24,173, so our amended budget for this project is $2,574,173, which will all still be covered under our Esser funds, so this will not be any impact on the general fund whatsoever.
Are you...
So if you have questions about Highview?
There you go. Uh, Mr. Baydun?
So I do wanna say, the, the, uh, the change requests, the change orders are less than 1% of the total budget.
It's about 1.4%, I did that math, but yeah.
Uh, I did the math and it's less, it's, it's less than 1%. $25,500 is 1%, so I gotta tell you, that's a great job, Penny.
But I'm not saying they're finished, because obviously, as we go along, there's still things that either we want to change or we want to add, um, again, one of the things at, at Highview that we're going to look at is, I did get a quote for replacing all that asphalt outside in the playground, because it wasn't originally going to be replaced, but as I went out and looked at it, and before we even started, um, I asked for a quote because of the fact that it was all cracked up, and it was, when we put new stuff in, it's not gonna look as, and be as, um, the way that we want to, however, the cost that they came back with, I think, was higher than what we expected, so once that goes, we'll actually take that out to bid separately, um, to get others.
Nice work.
Do we, um, Penny, allow like, um, a budget for change orders, I mean, do you kinda put that in there ahead of time, or we just take it as it comes?
Oh, we don't, um, only 'cause, eh, we anticipate always, but I didn't plug it into the budget, because we just didn't.
Okay.
But I mean, I always, I always know, and I always have some kinda set aside to say, okay, we can, we can push that there.
Yeah, and I mean, there's always change orders on everything, and so far, so good, so.
Any other questions on Highview?
I had the same question Sue did, I, I thought we had a, I thought we had a, um, little pot for that, but, and I was just wondering how much we dug into it.
The architects had a contingency plan, and so some of it may fall under that, but under the bid, actually, I don't think there is, so overall, when they originally did it.
Ms. Janu?
So time-wise, are we still on track to complete it in, I know, we, we said what, like, January?
Our goal was January 31st, there are some supply-demand issues that are pushing out, um, which is at no fault of anyone, um, Highview is the one that will be here sooner than, I think, the others, and that's just my opinion, um, we don't have, some of the products don't have a definite ship date yet, some of the ship dates are later in January, February, and so it's gonna push it, but again, a lot of the contractors or a lot of the companies won't give you an actual ship date until they're going closer, and it's just because of the supply chain.
So we can cross our fingers and hope they come sooner than just right now?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, next building.
Hillcrest, so this picture, um, shows, the two doors right there are off of the cafeteria, so those two doors will be new, um, into the cafeteria, the gym area, and those kids, will, there'll be an exit for them there, um, in this area, we are adding three rooms and a bathroom set, I'm sorry, there will be a bathroom in Highview as well, so, I apologize, and three rooms and a bathroom in here, also, you can see that one single door, that is, um, the new receiving room for maintenance and operations, because the old one is taken up, so then you'll see, that's a classroom there, and then there's two on the backside, and then the exit right there. If you can skip through to the pictures, please, if you don't mind, 'cause I'll read through this while the pictures, so, if you've driven by Hillcrest, you'll see that the trees have been removed, the big tree up front that was unfortunately dying, it has been removed, and then there are plans in the future to figure out to where to re-add some trees back, um, not quite yet, but there are, so, we got rid of those trees, and if you've driven by it, it opens that area up tremendously, as you can see in the pictures, it's just, it's sad, but it's also very, um, it's opening, it's, it's just wide open now. Well, and you look at, also, the picture on the bottom, the building pad, so where they're going to be building, they've built that up, we've run into several difficulties with DTE, um, see that pole, that pole finally came down last week, the light, the actual light came down last week, but there's some other poles connected, which, eh, connects the wires to the buildings and those things like that, that they had to run, this weekend, they ran underground wiring for a lot of the electrical and hooked it back up, so we'll be able to get rid of some more of those poles, um, unfortunately, we have one more pole left, if I'm not mistaken, that has some ATT, AT&amp;T wiring on it, so, we've had difficulty getting AT&amp;T out here, I'm hoping that's gonna be resolved relatively soon. Also, in the back of Hillcrest, there were those three light poles, those have come down, we're adding, we're going to be adding wall packs, lights to the building, which will be more economically for us, and you won't have those big, I'm sorry, but, big ugly electrical poles out in the back of no man's land, um, so we won't have to cut around them, so those are gone, so if you take a trip back there, you'll see, also, the sanitary lines have been put in, so they did dig up the road, um, and half of it was repaved, so we're trying to blend that as well, again, they are about four to six weeks behind because of DTE, so, they have not been able to move as quick as Hillcre- um, Highview because of the DTE issue and the pole, the pole is right in the middle of where we're building, and when it was, the wires underground were all, um, live wires, so we couldn't have built, dug around, so that was just not the issue, so once that's removed, they're going to start, now that the, the wiring's been adjusted, and a lot of those are dead now, dead wires, they're going to start the footings this week, um, and start digging out, trenching out the foundation and such, and so then, once the final pole gets moved out, then they'll be able to finish the foundation, pour the floor, and hopefully catch up to Highview a little bit quicker, unfortunately, like I said, when you drive by Hillcrest, you see it's open and empty, and you don't see as, as much building as Highview, but i- it's by no fault of the builder, um, again, when you have a big pole in the middle to get rid of the DTE, that's where we've been held up. Um, if you go to the Hillcrest change orders, we've had several at Hillcrest, Hillcrest has been a little bit, um, more difficult in that aspect, what, before our building permit would be approved, we had to get fire rating doors changed, so some of those, that first change order for $12,000, that was mandated by the state and the building permits, which, they use the same all across the three buildings, so I'm not quite sure why one was picked and the others were not, so, but, eh, before we could move forward, we had to charge that, so that was unforeseen, again, the technology O3R2, that's the same with the wiring for the buildings, like we did for the technology part, the sanitary lines, when we dug up to do the sanitary lines, the slope of the piping was different what had been identified on the drawings, and so therefore, all of the piping and everything that we had arranged, the archi- uh, the people had arranged, had to be reworked, so that it could fit into there, so they had to close it back up and do another day and get all the right pipes and right slants and all of those things. The registers, so in the gymnasium, where, um, we're cutting out the door, we will be taking out a vent, and so when they went to go through all the other registers, over the years, because they're so old, we've repainted them and k- kind of caked through them, and so it's blocked off, so we're putting all new registers in, to, to help regu- upgrade the registers and the, the vents, so that it can regulate the heat better in that room. Roof hatch, above the roof hatch, there was a steel beam that needed to be added to help support some of the, um, weight for the wall that we're taking out, and then the tree removal, so that big tree in the front that we were trying to save, and then, then our maintenance staff said, well, half of it is dying often, and it'll be dead, we ended up getting removed for $2,200, so, that wasn't in the original scope, almost finished. Original project budget was $2,465,000, our change order to date is $32,572, so our amended budget is $2,497,572.
Questions for Hillcrest? Mr. Saba?
Nice job again, eh, these are things that you can't see, I mean, closed off, huh, registers over the years are not a good thing, I would just, I, I would ask that, I don't know where I heard this rule years ago, but I hope we'd be able to apply it here, for every tree we cut down, we plant two.
I'm working on it.
No, I'm, I'm...
I know, I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying.
And we need to do it with the kids in the springtime, like, this has got, they gotta know how important the environment is, and...
I really do want to wait until we get everything finished, so that we can know where to put them, but yes.
Even if it's the beginning of next year, it's a big event, I just, count the number of trees you've cut down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And if it's not in the budget, I would be more than happy to buy the trees myself.
Of course.
That is an offer, and I mean it, but we cannot just cut trees down enough.
There's been a, there's been a two at Highview that we cut down and three at Hillcrest, and there's, I'll get to Kinlock in a minute.
Okay, so that's five, so now we gotta plant 10.
It's a great idea, great idea.
Good. I like it, any other questions for Hill, um, Mr. Baydun?
Just a quick question, first of all, great job again, Penny, um, who, do you know who did the survey for the sanitary lines prior to groundbreaking?
I don't remember, eh, I know it was part of the architect, but it was also with the water department, what was on the plans that we were given?
Right.
Yeah, so I don't remember, eh, they're, they're not relatively new.
They're not current, correct?
Yeah, eh, they may be current on file, but they're not, they're not...
The reason why I ask is, is if we're, we're spending $9,300 because of probably misinformation, and I get it, those lines are really old, I understand, but for future projects, which we have a lot of future projects coming, let's just ensure, like, to go back and to check everything and how we came up with a certain number, just to make sure that we're not, y- you know, this is $2 million, but I know we're gonna have projects that total millions in the very near future, which wouldn't be a $30,000 change, could be a $300,000 change, so let's just be copacetic of that and ensure that we're taking a look at it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next building.
Kinlock Elementary. So at Kinlock Elementary, we're adding five classrooms, three, four, five, five, I have to count, sorry, five classrooms, and that comes off of the back of the building, um, so we have removed eight trees at, at Kinlock, unfortunately, they were already dead, to our defense, we did not cut down any live ones.
We're 21.
26.
I go halfway through on that moment.
No, no, there's 13 trees that we've removed so far.
He's doubling.
He's doubling, he's two for one, yeah, yeah, he's doubling, two for one.
26 trees, we need to find space for 26 trees.
Okay. I'm sure my maintenance staff will not like cutting around the trees, but, but I'll let them know, um, so, but, of those eight trees, none of them were alive, they were gonna come down anyway, so, we did get rid of those, um, the soil has been, what, what we had to do in the soil has been removed and, and upgraded, and when we get to the change orders, I'll explain that a little bit more, so that it's ready for the flooring and the foundation, um, so the brickwork has been started, if you can see on the pictures, they've dug, um, the foundation and started the brickwork for the walls, then this week, they hadn't started it yet this morning, but this week, they're starting the sanitation lines, so those will run along the outside of Kinlock, up into the street, um, between the building and the playground, and so, um, they're gonna do little sections of that in a time, and we've gotten a, a timeline to Ms. Marveso, so she knows when and where they'll be on what day. Um, with Kinlock, again, they did have a two-week delay, um, I don't have the final price, and that's why it's not in here for the change orders with the, with the soil that is forthcoming, but what they had to do is, some of the soil was not appropriate for building, um, it was called unsuitable soil, it had too much clay mixture, the mix, organic mixture was just not suitable for building on it without collapsing, so they had to remove all of the unsuitable soil and bring in new, um, that is going to be a major cost, but I don't have the final dollar amount on that yet, once I do, I will share that. Again, we had exterior doors, um, that we, in order to keep the project online or in a timely fashion, so that they could move forward with that, we bumped it up to a two-to-three week delivery instead of an eight-to-12 week delivery, and that cost us $1,700, um, we did get a credit for some power supply, that was minimal $140, but it's a credit, so that's a good thing, and then our trees that we removed right now were $7,600, so so far, the change orders, um, are only $9,000, however, again, that soil is going to be costly, and I don't have a final dollar amount for that yet.
Any questions for Kinlock? Nope, okay, thank you very much.
Nice work.
Very nice work.
Well, I do have a couple more updates.
Keep going.
So we have the athletic fields, so these are very exciting things going on with the athletic field, um, bids for the turf and the track will be released September 19th, uh, the pre-bid walkthrough for that will be September 22nd, and then our bid due date for the field and the track only will be October 13th, 2022, the other items will come in a separate big packet, that's taking a little bit longer to develop, because that's where the engineers are coming in for the drainage system and underneath the field and the, and the retentions under the field, so that's why that part's taking a little bit longer to put all it together. And that is the end of my presentation, so thank you, any questions about any of the projects?
Um, and I guess I'm gonna have to ask Sue too, but, Sue, if you remember, uh, once upon a time when they were actually working, I guess, on that field before, didn't they already kind of, didn't they prep it for plumbing, um, over there?
There, there is light plumbing that goes up close to the concession, but that's all that it reaches, but the, underneath, they have to prep it for the drainage, because the drainage are blocked, the drains are blocked, and so that's why it floods all the time, so that's gonna be the major work.
So, originally, I know what you're talking about, originally, what was listed to be done was they were supposed to run water to that building, so that building would be like a restroom.
Right.
And it never was done, they put a pipe, but did nothing with it.
Mr. Saba?
That was in the plans and it was approved.
It was a part of the bond?
Correct.
Yes, that's right.
Then they came back, I'm sorry if I could, then they came back and they said it was gonna be more than it was estimated, and we had other problems with the boiler system, so we had to stop that.
The track was a part of the bond too, right?
He sat up there.
Redoing the track was part of the bond as well, that wasn't done as.
What was that guy's name, from, uh, from that company that you always dealt with, Sue, that, uh, gave the updates?
Darren, was it, or...
Platten Moran, Ahmaud Beasley?
Yes.
Yeah.
He sat up here on one of the presentations and actually said, yes, it was done, from what I remember.
He did, he did say that.
Didn't he say that?
Yes, he did.
They, they ran a pipe, but nothing, not connected, nothing's running to it, nothing was done.
And I don't think there's any sanitation pipe, there was water, and I might be wrong, there was water pipes going to the building, but nothing that would drain from, so if we added restrooms, none of that was completed, although that was part of the bond too.
Yes.
Okay. And we can't go after Platten Moran for any of this?
That would be up to the board, but you're looking at how much money you're willing to spend to do that.
I could get a new field and a bathroom out of it.
The ni- the, the nice thing I'd like to add is, and I appreciate, uh, Penny and, and the team, because honestly, everybody has been really stepping up, I mean, there are times where, you know, Joe Gonzalez and Jim Medalski, and, I'm sure I'm missing a few people, I mean, they're putting in a lot of extra time there to help, um, the nice thing too is even with these change orders right now, we're still within our Esser budget, so that, that's a good thing as well, and currently, our auditors are in the district, and there'll be an audit report coming, I think, November?
They're going to present in October, but...
In October, so they'll be presenting our, our budget in October, um, and we're already looking at some things, so, we're, we're, we're excited.
So, my question is, I know, we received the update in August about like, some of the change orders, um, are we looking at, 'cause they don't necessarily come to the board for approval, it's just that we're getting the information on the change orders, so, is that just going to be the typical, I mean, at what point?
With the exception of the, the expedient of the door for $1,700, um, all of these, well, the wiring, but we haven't, uh, bid that out yet, and we haven't gotten the final, but, um, those were all necessary, so it wasn't something to vote on?
Yeah.
So the ones that aren't necessary, such as the asphalt and those things, those are the ones that will be going out to bid or extended to vote on to see if, do we want this to happen?
That was, that's what I was...
Yes, the ones that are necessary in order to keep the project moving forward, Dr. Mousalem and I have been discussing them and going through them and making sure that, that everything is, yes, this is necessary, yes, this is it, and going ahead approving it, and then pushing it into the update, so that you're all aware of it, um, but we didn't want to slow down the process, because some of these are really time-sensitive.
Yeah, no, that's fine, they were in our, I, I know they were in our August, um, update, I'm just, that was, I was gonna lead into the next part, I mean, is it then, the ones that we have to approve or things that we just are gonna decide whether or not we want to add them or not?
Correct.
We look at it in terms of what in need.
Okay.
Ms. Kaminsky?
I just wanna thank you for keeping us apprised of the...
I just want to thank you for keeping us appraised of the change orders because, you know, back, which gives me a migraine, we were not made aware of those change orders, nor did we ever see them, nor could anyone find them, so I appreciate it.
And I just want, you know, this was a promise that we made the board, that we're going to be extremely transparent in everything we do. And that's because, these are the taxpayers' dollars. And as I said to someone the other day, this isn't the use of Mansolom School District, this is the Crestwood School District. And there are decisions that have to come to the board sometimes, and we're going to do that. So we'll continue moving forward with that, and you'll continue to get those updates. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate that. Okay, is, was that our, that's our only item for today?
I just have two quick updates for the board, just because of a couple memos that I had sent, just a couple of quick updates. First off, Andrew O'Hara and I have a meeting with Dean Transportation soon. We are going to be looking at a change so that we don't run into the issues we ran into before. These were the issues that we were concerned about back in July when we had that conversation. So we're going to move forward and we're going to look at some hubs, and we'll bring more to the board on that. The second thing is, Mr. Casebault has out to the staff, anyone that's willing to commence with an extra pay assignment to be the crossing guard. The city does not have a crossing guard at this time. Hamzi Yunus, our SRO, plus other Dearborn Heights police officers have tried to jump in when possible. I know the administration here has tried to jump in when possible. But we're hoping to get a staff member who wants an extra pay assignment. It's not much, but it'll just help us in the morning and in the afternoon.
What times?
You know, I have it written in my office, I want to say 7:30 to 8:15, or 8:30 is the morning, and then they... But I have it written in my office. Yeah, so hopefully, Mr. Casebault, I texted him today and just said, hey, and he said, no bites yet, but I'm still working on it. So just so the community knows that we're on those things, and we're just trying to work through them.
Ms. Fowes?
Could you get parent volunteers to actually cover that?
We could.
For one option, and then does the city, if you do get a staff member to cover it, will the city recoup you for the money?
I'm going to be honest, I didn't even go into conversation with them that yet. I just want to get somebody there, and then I'll have that conversation on the back end.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, thank you, I don't know what type of, I mean, I don't know what we're offering for that short period of time, but whatever, I know, but whatever we, whatever, to really get somebody to want to do it, make it worth their while right now, because I told you, there was a couple of pretty scary incidences.
So the thing that we're dealing with is we have to go based off a contract and current practice. So it's like, I would love to say, hey, 500 bucks a day.
No, obviously.
But you know what I mean. But we have to follow the contract procedure, so. But we will, I'll tell Mr. Casebault if he can't, we'll see if we can get some parent volunteers maybe on a rotation.
Do you know currently, at this time, Yusuf, how much we pay for that, or no?
We don't pay for it. The city pays for it.
Got it.
But the city's been covering it, but because they don't have someone, I just want to get someone out there.
Yep.
That would be great, yes, please, thank you.
Ms. Fowes?
This might be way too expensive, but I thought I remembered a cost of like $10,000, but it could be more. You know those bridges, those like walk bridges that you have, especially with, you know...
Yeah, a lot of money.
Right?
About $10,000.
Isn't that $10,000?
Oh, no, it's like $300,000.
Okay, I wasn't sure. But long-term, you wouldn't need the crossing guard, you wouldn't need any, and they're safe because they're, you know, going over the traffic.
I know it's just a little under a half a million because the mosque on Ford Road was looking to build the same type of bridge, just like a walkway bridge, and it was astronomical.
You would need two.
One here and one at Crestwood, I think.
Yeah, in 1945.
Crestwood, I know I had...
1905.
I know I updated the board in a memo a few months back about Crestwood. Everything's in process to put that light and the cross and everything there. So we're just, we're just waiting, it's in process. So we've done everything we can do, the county's been very supportive, the city, we're just, it's in process, so we're hopefully going to have that soon.
Great, thank you. All right, that ends our study session, and we'll be back at 7 for our regular board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Mr. Sabal, supported by Ms. Kaminski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?